Good afternoon, it's 3 o'clock. We have the Morgantown Area Partnership update and we have four individuals plus others sitting here. If you want to just state your name and then we'll turn it over to Mark Nesselrod Jr.
I'm Ron Justice with the Development Authority and Montague Area Economic Partnership.
Mark Nesselrod with the Chamber of Commerce and the Morgantown Area Economic Partnership.
Mark in Brogno, Jackson Kelly.
Mark Meanano with Jackson Kelly.
Basically, we're thrilled because we hear some great things are about to happen. So if you want to just open it up to you and Mark, can you want to just go from there?
Sure, and I'll let everybody fill in. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, I might want to say, if you just want to say your names who are here and why, who you represent.
Terry Cutbreit, I'm the COO at the Morgantown Area Chamber of Commerce.
I'm Elvin Callen, I'm VP for Government Affairs, Community and Economic Development with the Chamber of Commerce.
And Kelly Palmer with the Development Authority.
Great, okay, so.
Thanks for having us and thanks for rescheduling after last week's shutdown. There were a number of other folks from all the boards that wanted to come and were coming last week but couldn't make it on the shorter notice this week, but they said they'll send their support and enthusiasm for this. So the Morgantown Area Partnership, as you all know, has been in the works for probably a few years now. We've gone through several studies with consultants and had a lot of input, but I think we're at a very exciting time where now we're creating this partnership that's going to speak as a unified voice and be a tool for the business community, quasi-government entities, nonprofits, and really create a true alliance here that'll be good for our area. Formation of MAP allows the Morgantown Area to increase its competitiveness as a national leader. We're not putting together something that hasn't been done across the nation. I don't know that we're necessarily behind the curve, but we're with the curve of putting an alliance like this together. So MAP, it involves the Chamber of Commerce, Morgantown Area Economic Partnership, Morgantown or the Montague County Development Authority, as well as Sunnyside Up. It's a structure where these groups are entering into a collaboration and partnership agreement. And the, all three, all four entities will retain their corporation status. The economic partnership will basically become dormant and so we'll have the chamber creating a DBA, Morgantown Area, Morgantown Park, Morgantown Area Partnership. And I want to try and stress the area of that. This is a collaboration for the entire Morgantown Area, the entire Morgantown MSA. So the chamber will be, we'll call it the lead entity as far as the day-to-day operations go. The chamber will be where the normal day-to-day operational procedures are housed, who will hire the personnel and then contract them for chamber purposes, for Development Authority purposes, for Sunnyside purposes. We should all be able to co-locate hopefully into the High Street Building where the Development Authority's been renovating and has done a great job with. That's kind of a lead and I'm here to answer any questions. Definitely appreciated the support from the Development Authority. Shaun's been on many of the committees. The groups have agreed to hire a search firm right now. Jorgensen, as you saw in the Dominion Post, I think Dominion Post article this past weekend did a wonderful job of summarizing the current status of this partnership. Jorgensen's putting out a national search for an executive leader, hopefully have somebody in place early second quarter, I would think, 2019. Certainly want the best and the brightest to be able to represent our area from an economic standpoint, from a government relations standpoint, from collaboration standpoint. And then he or she will certainly put a wonderful team together that partnership will oversee. So at the partnership slash chamber level, you have one large board of directors where the other organizations will have the ability to appoint members to that board. The board will also consist of nonprofit member representatives, small business, medium business, large business representatives. It'll have other representatives, I think there's eight or so slots currently for towns, cities, county government officials, quasi-government, development authorities, those kind of spots. So the more the merrier. We truly want to be able to speak from a Morgantown MSA perspective, go to Charleston, go attract businesses from an economic development standpoint competitively and with one voice. We've had discussions with several of our key stakeholder chamber members about the Morgantown Area Partnership and getting increased contributions, getting their buy-in. I mean, they understand that this process is going to be good for all, it's going to be good for, you know, somebody moving to the area, somebody that's existed in the area, existing businesses, new businesses. They understand that they want to be at the front end of it. We'll have informational sessions here probably in January for our current chamber members answering any questions, giving you all commissioners a handout, kind of an overview of what is MAP. It's a good, I don't know if you call it 14 pages of summary, but it's a good overview. So the Development Authority, so we've got the MAP board, we have the MAP board, which is basically a chamber board grown in size. The Development Authority will retain its board of directors, Sunnyside will retain its board of directors. The leadership team will need to, they'll need to figure out, okay, which personnel are concentrating on which strategic initiatives. But Development Authority will certainly be in its lane of developing business parks, recruiting, attracting businesses, so the airport expansion, the runway, and the airport business park that certainly in Development Authority's, you know, top of their priority. Sunnyside has urban revitalization, the TIF district there in Sunnyside, that those TIF funds will stay segregated. So Development Authority and, excuse me, Sunnyside will be making a contribution to the Morgantown Area Partnership chamber entity for the shared services, for the daily operations, for the personnel.
Could want to add to the mark and marker here because we needed...
Yeah, when those lawyers are here, I'm like...
But when we looked at this, we knew with four entities coming together, there would be a lot of questions. And two of those entities, the Development Authority and Sunnyside Up, had statute-related items that they had to keep their autonomy. So we solicited and through the kindness of Jackson and Kelly, they came and said, "We'll do this work for you as our contribution to the partnership." So their role in this is working with each individual organization, listening to them, making sure that we've crossed all of our Ts, dotted our Is, as we formulate this one agreement. So, and they've done a very good job of that, but I wanted to make sure you knew why they're rolling in this.
We've got basically five operational divisions planned and then roughly a dozen strategic initiatives within those operational divisions, but we've got intentional economic development, talent development, urban revitalization and community development, government relations, asset management. And I won't read through all the strategic initiatives, but they're on, I think, page nine of the handout. And you'll see that they cross so many of these group sectors. We don't want these groups working in silos any longer, we want everybody on the same page. I give the example often of my day job with real estate development. We've, we're interested in developing a hotel site in a community in Pennsylvania. And the day before I went to visit the site, I called up and they'd actually combined their CVB and their Development Authority, but with similar shared services, shared economic growth perspectives and goals. And I was able to get a meeting with one of the individuals there. She brought me to a site, the very next day she brought me to a site where a gentleman had a thriving business, entertainment type of business that wanted to construct a hotel. She'd given me a market analytical survey that they call as a STAR report, but it was not only analytics, it was an informational promotional piece for their area, their county area, recommended contractors, recommended engineers, recommended attorneys, gave me information on 10 other sites where hotels were in different stages of planning or potential construction. Their Development Authority was working on a project to bring it, to be a public partner in a, in the construction of a convention center. But they were all speaking from one page at least, and that was just one individual within that organization that had, and she wasn't even the one in charge of economic development. They had certainly a tourism group, but they were all talking, they all knew where to steer somebody if somebody was calling in like I was. And they were also going out to recruit businesses. Something that we've not done as an area is really sell ourselves as an economic prosperous climate. We've had success in spite of ourselves. We've certainly sold ourselves from a tourism perspective with the CVB, but I think it's time for us to grow that as, from the quasi-government nonprofit group. Hey, the Morgantown Area is a prosperous place to locate your business. Here's why, here, we need to focus on workforce retention, workforce recruitment, retiree attraction, those kind of initiatives. And there's a lot of low-hanging fruit for an executive to put a leadership team around and accomplish.
And you've hit the nail on the head, Mark. And again, I'm a member of the Development Authority and anxiously excited about this project from the beginning. Now, it's been, it's been an evolution and it'll continue to be an evolution. I think it's constructed nimbly enough that, you know, if it's not working, you know, we can back out. But some of the things, the low-hanging fruit is, you know, the shared services. Right now, we as a Development Authority are seeing that, and we made a decision when we lost our director a year and a half ago that we would go to part-time and we were struggling with, do we want somebody to just keep the lights on or do we want that person with a vision that's really going to be what a development person would be? And we kind of, because we, this was in the works, we kind of went the earlier route. We really wanted, and again, that's not a slight on Lisa, she does a really good job, especially with keeping our, keeping that building going is just enough. So we realized that we need something bigger and something, you know, that's more of a part of something. And you do get different stories, someone coming into this county that wants, has an idea, you know, wants to, is interested in some sort of development. And depending on your, who or when you may talk to someone, you may get different information and different stories. And we want to talk, and, you know, our county is too complex to do it the way we've been. And we've been successful in spite of ourselves. When I say "we" as a county, you know, we're most prosperous county in West Virginia and we're, we do it in a fractured way with a lot of, lot of volunteer support, all these different organizations. And it's time we start working together and pulling a lot of this together. And I commend Commissioner Callen, you know, with, I didn't, when I came in office, I wasn't sure what we were doing with this building, but when I, "Okay, this would make sense, you have a one-stop shop." Again, I hope, I'm glad to see that, that coming true. And I would hope that, you know, once we prove that this is working, that maybe we can grow the organization. But again, I'm, I'm part, you're preaching to choir with me and obviously the public's here. We want to make sure that people understand why we're doing this. We're trying to, you know, again, we're just trying to work together and trying to work smarter, not harder. And there's, there's a lot of upside to this, this project. And anybody that, again, you're talking to the commission, you're also talking to the public because we're taping this, but if anything that you would add as far as benefits, you know, I'd certainly like you to jump in and...
Well, as far as our member benefits to the chamber members, I mean, the businesses now are represented by the single entity, but their, their representation grows exponentially when they know that a Development Authority, Sunnyside Up and others are working on their behalf. You know, we've talked about, we've reached out to current key stakeholders that are members of these, of these groups. You know, that certainly includes the Development Authority of the county, City of Morgantown, you know, WVU, Mon Health, WVU Medicine, you know, and other large private businesses. We look forward to getting this in place and growing that membership and including, you know, Granville, including Star City, including, you know, the other municipalities and other stakeholders. I mean, everybody has a seat at the table if they wish to be a part of this. And I think that, that works to that collective effort. You know, is everybody going to agree on everything? No, but, but the compromises and the things that we do agree on, I mean, goodness gracious, with the leveraging all that power and focus and energy, we can get a lot accomplished.
Well, something as simple as sites is, you know, we, we have four really good organizations. And, you know, through the work of the County Commission, because you just had the announcement with Lidos this week and that TIF and how well it's done, and, you know, the Sunnyside TIF is doing very well. We've got a lot of upside that's going to come on this airport project with the city and potentially another 90 or so acres of development. The industrial park, Morgantown Industrial Park, you know, with what could come with downstream opportunities in oil and gas, it's all here. And there's a lot of talented people working on it. But right now, collectively, we do not even have a place where you go to one place and say, "Give us the sites of everything you got, of three acres or more, potentially to develop or if I want to bring my business here." We don't have that. And if you'd ask five people in town right now, if I'm calling up and saying, "Hey, I'm thinking about bringing my business to Morgantown," whether it's two people or 200 people, those five people would probably direct you to five different areas to make a contact. So this really does streamline the opportunities to continue to grow the economy. And with all of us working together, it's going to make all of our organizations stronger.
In the past year, we've taken a look at the organization's operational budgets and just cramming them all together, we're in the black. And that's without doing anything, without accounting for any of the efficiencies and that kind of stuff saved. You know, those are, those efficiencies will be realized. As I said, we've talked to key stakeholders about upping commitments. We've got many of those pledges secured, which will allow us to hire the executive team, allow us to execute the strategic initiatives within those operational divisions.
Go ahead.
You're, you're on Sunnyside Up, correct, Ron? So we have, we have membership from all organizations here. And I know from the Development Authority standpoint, we've been, we discuss this every month in regards to where the status is, and we poll the membership. And we have had unanimous support. And again, it's not always perfect, it's not always been easy, but we've had unanimous support to, to move forward and let, let it take direction. Do we know, what's the status of the agreements have...
That's the same with the Economic Partnership Board, the Chamber Board. They've all, I think the Economic Partnership is the last to officially approve it, but it's been brought up and championed in every single meeting prior with updates, so I think...
Hopefully we can do that tomorrow.
Once they, once we get that approval tomorrow, I believe we can sign the collaboration partnership agreement. Because everybody's already agreed to the Jorgensen search. So that means a minor tweak to the chamber articles and bylaws to bring them up to speed and have some informational sessions here before, we'll call it the Morgantown Area Partnership Annual Dinner here in January.
Well, I appreciate Jackson Kelly. Kelly, I don't know if you guys knew what you were getting into when you were, were you directed to do this work or were you...
As we'd be interested in getting the opportunity to jump in or, you know, if we were going to try to get in on the RFP, you know, what, I mean, certainly, I love these kinds of projects. I love working with both, have experience working with both governmental, non-governmental, quasi-governmental nonprofits and kind of knowing the bounds of where and what each of them can and can't do. And to try to get a, create a framework where there is easy buy-in or agreement among these folks for, or the different organizations to allow us to carry out all of these activities, but make it so that if we need to make adjustments as this thing gets up and running, or, you know, God forbid, in a couple of years, people make the decision that this isn't working out as we thought it would, that it's easy enough, at least at this point, to extricate everyone from what we're getting, hopefully, going to achieve with it. So, you know, there's no hard, everyone is, still has to get their board buy-in for money. It is not committed out of the gate that any of the organizations are going to provide funds to the other. I mean, there's a good faith, we're going to work together and hopefully as part of that, they, I obviously can't foresee any difficulties, but presumably everybody's going to be working together the whole time. There shouldn't be surprises when it comes to budget and you can start seeing those efficiencies. And the agreement is built in to continue to grow, to accommodate, as we identify those activities, that each of the organizations could be carried out by what is going to become the Morgantown Area Partnership, that we can add to this to say, "We'll do X, Y, and Z in exchange for, you know, this, to cover the costs of having those personnel."
And I forgot, we had, I'll say one more thing, I'll let you guys talk. Usually I'm not the one that's taking up all the time.
The other way you're looking at me.
I forgot we did, we did an RFP and they did respond. And we actually, we had a couple of responses, but they responded to do this for free, so I really appreciate this. And you had piqued my curiosity when you said something about talking, you know, one-stop shop, someone comes in, wants to talk about what sites are available. I would encourage, and I think the other two will agree with me, that the county's interested in helping out. I mean, we have a great GIS team in capabilities to make sure that we, you know, take advantage, don't reinvent the wheel, that, you know, we have some capabilities that we can also lend to this effort. So anyhow, with that, I'll...
Go ahead, Ed.
Speaking of growth, I see from some of your examples that they are not confined to sometimes a specific county. I am a regionalist, even though I am a Montague County Commissioner. Is there some thought in the future as to what we can do to broaden this horizon, including the neighboring counties?
Oh, I absolutely think so. And that's been a goal going in.
Preston County Development Authority is already part of the...
See, they're part of May, so...
Yeah, and so...
And CVBs.
And CVB. So I'll give you just one small example. You know, the, there's been a dialogue for a couple, three years about river commerce. And so one of the things that has happened just recently is folks from Marion County Development Authority, Mon County Development Authority, the chamber, we've all been meeting to look at ways to increase that commerce. And what we kind of landed on was that in the Mon County, at least in the Morgantown and beyond Poole, we have good loading facilities, we have a couple of opportunities here, that really if we need that additional facility, that commerce would lock through all the locks, our focus needs to be on Marion County and that facility. So it benefits Mon County as well to work with Marion County to do that. So I think there's a number of things. High-tech, you know, what's going on in Fairmont with the consortium could be a big part of this.
Well, what I was referring to, I just don't want us to be building another silo as we refer to it.
No, exactly.
Okay?
Housing.
It's not us wanting to take over the world.
Yep.
I don't, I don't want to put it like that, but, I mean, I, this is, this is an area, obviously, our area of employ comes from Preston, Taylor, Marion, Harrison, Garrett County, Fayette and Greene. There's no denying that, so...
But the other thing that we found, and we knew this before we went into the study, but it solidified it, this, this, from a board member standpoint, that these four organizations had a lot of crossover already. And as a result, you know, we all knew each other, but we were still operating in those silos of our own organization. And what this will also do is for board members, it will help streamline, you know, instead of attending four meetings a month or six meetings, streamline that, but it also, there's a lot of communication already occurring because we're crossing over that can just continue.
I know you were here about six to nine months ago and you had an out, a rough outline. And I remember you asking us to wait and so you could come back to us with a better, more polished document. And I think clearly you have done what you said you were going to do. I mean, I, I know I've met with you, I'm really pleased. I think you took the best of what the advice, you know, that, you know, you were, that they had made some recommendations. And I think the county's, one of the many major parts of the county's goal was collaboration and partnership. You just did it. And I think it's real easy for the county to tell other people to do it, but now if we're also being a part of that, I think it makes it a lot easier to sell it to the other bodies. And, and as I said, you know, I'm real pleased. I mean, we went over this, this is just so much, so logical, and I like to use the word silos because that was the complaint. The one-stop shopping, again, I really like that. That was the complaint when someone would come to one of us and we didn't know who to give it to. And now we can give it to a place and you have different avenues to sell it. And the other thing that I like, you were talking regional, but I was going to look a little smaller. You're not looking at whether it's Westover or Morgantown, you're looking at what's the best possible place and program for that business. And we've never done that before. And so it's going through all jurisdictional lines. And I'm real pleased. I mean, I, I told Shaun earlier that, you know, after our meeting, this is great. I mean, I really think that, you know, this is something that we can get behind and would like to get behind personally. And I think it's, I think we're ready, if you can convince the other boards, but the one question I do have, so since you're here, the only question that someone might ask to the county is, "Well, is there any problem with the Development Authority because they're statutory in nature? How would you want us to respond to that because they're a part of the program? So how would you want us to?"
Sure, well, at the end of the day, the MCDA maintains its autonomy. It retains its own separate public corporation standing. It still has its own board appointed by the county that is going to still be fully accountable to the Development Authority and have that duty there. The MAP board, although it will include members selected by the MCDA, will not be making the decisions for the MCDA.
Okay.
That is still part of the, the conversation to go back and forth. And as well, I mean, you know, if you step away from the framework of the collaboration operating agreement, at its core, it is a handshake agreement that we're all going to work, that we colloquially, all of these organizations, want to work together in good faith to advance all of the community's interests here, but that, it is still just a service contract.
Right.
Aside from that, it is not attempting to merge or otherwise acquire. I appreciate the MAEP as it winds down.
Right.
It, most of its operations, knowing that it will still remain a vehicle for some of the funding that comes into MCDA, to the extent that it's obtaining grants and stuff. It will still do that and that money still steers to where it's required to go. And the accounts still maintain segregation and separation as they're required, so there's not this commingling of funds between the organizations.
And also, Mark, to that point, the assets of the organization for MCDA will stay intact, not only the cash accounts...
Yes, they are not going anywhere.
But also there's property ownership and all those things will stay intact with MCDA. So we're not rolling, for example, the county building that MCDA, hopefully one day will totally outright own, stays with MCDA, won't roll into part of this new partnership.
Same balance sheet assets, that holds true for all the organizations.
Yeah, all the organizations.
Yeah. So then in terms, so like when the, if the, if part of the slash chamber determines it is going to locate in that building, we'll need to come up with an agreement for them to lease space from the county or the Development Authority. So to maintain those walls.
Yep.
Good.
Ed, to your question of regionalism, if you have a one-stop shop, that makes that process a lot easier because someone coming to talk in Mon County knows that they're talking to the, the group that can make things happen and can answer for, for all the whole county. So that's, it's a vital step to that regionalism.
Well, and economic development goes far beyond just building a building or, you know, a company coming in and producing widgets or whatever that is. I mean, you heard that with Lidos, that, yeah, the land was here, the opportunity was here, good climate, but some of the things... here, good climate, but some of the things they mentioned, you know, recreation, they talked about walking trails, you know, quality of life, education system, housing, that's an important focus of this organization as well, because all those quality of life type issues will help in the recruitment of new opportunities here.
And again, education's an important component, but it's a, it's probably one of the most important selling points of this area. The way it's constructed right now, we don't have a seat for, required seat for anybody.
One of those eight seats could, could certainly be filled with a Board of Education person.
And that might be a suggestion is to make sure that we, again, I'm all about, let's making sure we're all talking. We have, we have a representative from all people in, in all groups in there and have a voice.
You're going to have to have that board meeting in the Coliseum. I understand...
No, we're not talking about adding, we're talking about one of the...
Well, even that, but I understand, as said, you start with that, and then you're going to have to consolidate, because there's no way you're going to continue five years from having 39 members on the board.
Give everyone a chance, and then the extent that folks feel all for...
And then people will understand the process, and I think, yeah, from there.
Kind of give them...
But I like the idea that you're at least giving everyone an opportunity in the beginning, so they have a voice, and then we'll go from there.
And with that said, you know, we, one of the programs that we took a long look at that's been very successful has been the Charleston Area Alliance. In fact, that was the very first visit we made, and their board is upwards of 40 people, and they've been in place for a number of years, and they function very well. So, again, I think we all have that concern that the number's large, but on the other hand, there is a motto out there that says it can be successful with a large number of board members.
Yeah, with such a large board, and even doing some research across the other organizations that try to cut across so many different sectors like this. They, many of them have boards this size, to the extent you have participation, you know, I don't know, but...
So, a general timeline moving on, what is your general goal, and then also what can we as a commission help you with to achieve that goal?
So, collaboration agreement getting signed this month, some minor bylaw and article amendments probably later in the month, first and, first couple of weeks of January, first, second or third week in January, probably an informational setting that we'd love you all to attend, you know, kind of an open door, public kind of thing, just question and answer, low-key. The chamber dinner, partnership dinner is the 24th of January, and I know you all generally attend that. You know, Sean's dedicated his time as volunteer on the, on the search committee for new leadership, so that's, like I said, we'll probably get lists of resumes and that kind of stuff probably sometime in January, I would expect from Jorgensen, maybe narrow that down sometime late first quarter, get somebody hired early second quarter. You know, certainly the county has, has had a history of funding commitment to the Development Authority and Economic Partnership, so continuing that or, and growing that would certainly be appreciated.
When is the budget due by? Just so I, March 20th?
Approved by March 28th.
Okay, so then the only thing I would recommend, since you're going to have a number of different entities, you know, maybe if you could look towards somewhere mid-March or, you know, first of March, getting a general final, because then that way you could, could have already asked for the funding, that gives them probably some different cities and the county. That might be something I'd want to consider.
That's fair.
And for location purposes, right now, we've honed in on the second floor of the magistrate building as a good key location for all of us to work together. We haven't analyzed anything on it yet, but we think that would be a good location that's already in place that we could all work from.
We're going to refer to that as 238.
238.
Oh, yeah, we've heard, it's called 238 High now.
We don't want to refer to it as...
I think the radio, they had three references today on a radio show to, what is that really called?
Yeah, I know, but no one knows, yeah.
Montgomery Ward's.
Yeah, 238, like 10-202, you have 238 High.
Call it Montgomery Ward.
Yeah, no, that's, well, good, no, this is, this has been fantastic. I mean, I appreciate you coming and informing us, and I think we will, you know, I know that the three of us want to be a part of the, part of your solution, and...
Terry, Eldon, Kelly, you have anything you want to add?
Yeah.
It's just been, it's been a long time coming, and I, I think, I think it's going to do great things for this county, and as long as I've been around, and maybe Eldon since he's much older, but, yeah, there's never been outward business recruitment in this, in this county, and that's just amazing, and so, that there hasn't been. So, to have that activity go on, I think is really going to reap amazing results.
Yeah, since Terry mentioned my age. Yeah, our county has always been, this is mine, and you're not going to get any of it. And I'm sorry to say that, but I think people that's been born and raised here know that's the way it is. Our county has changed a lot, and I know Ed can testify to that, and I think there's a lot of that that's gone away, and that's a testament to, to the people here, and this, I think this is a tremendous thing, and it's, it's been, it's been an effort. I know that the discussions, and Ron can testify to that, this discussions on this started with Dan Kimball when he first came here.
Right.
So, it's, it's been, it's been an effort, and I'm very pleased with where we're at and where this is going. I, I'm really looking forward to what it can bring and what the possibilities could be, not only for Montague County, but as Ed brought out, for the future of the region, because I can see this, this catching on to the region where there will be one stop, as Sean was saying, one stop where someone comes in and say, "Well, really won't work for Montague County, but you know Marion County has this, or Taylor County has, where that's so integrated and so working together that our region really will blossom." So, I'm, I'm very pleased, and I'm very pleased with this commission and the leadership you've shown on this. I thank you for that.
This is great, so we look forward to work with you and hearing from you the next step, okay?
Very good.
And you know it's good when lawyers don't say very little, so...
Just one more thing.
That happens when you don't pay by the hours.
That's right. I just tell a red light, "We're done." That's how we know.